Good morning. Welcome to the August 27, 2018 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please Commissioner Jim Everwater will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Jim?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the blessings that you provide us every day and the opportunity to be here today. We ask that you watch over and protect us and our families and protect our emergency responders that look after our safety every day and especially watch over those who are serving overseas for us and our freedoms to enjoy business that we're taking care of today. Give us wise discussion and decision making today and guidance in all things that we do. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we see you.
Call the roll, please, Bill.
Ron Allen.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Craig Lynch.
Yeah.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Mike Vought.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
You have a call.
We need to read and approve the minutes of our April the 23rd and May 14th meeting. I'll call and black chair Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed both sets of those meeting minutes and I find no issues or corrections to make, so I'll make a motion to accept.
Sir. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for April 23rd and May 14th. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Any items withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir. Everything's still on.
Okay. Here we go.
Better fours.
Under new business, item 6A submitted for preliminary plan approval. Item 6A118-1008 Walnut Chase, 105 lots on 73 and a half acres. Zone PUD located off Walnut Grove Road. Landdevelopment.com is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and good morning Commissioners. The property that is the subject of this preliminary plan was originally rezoned to PUD by the Board of Commissioners back in April of this year. This plan that you're looking at today is consistent with the planned, I'm sorry, with the approved pattern book from that zoning application. We have requested an updated traffic study for Walnut Grove Road and Highway 231 that has been received. We don't expect, we didn't expect it actually as fast as we got it, but we were thankful that we got it as fast as we did. Review of that is ongoing, of course. Approval of this, you know, we'll have another crack at any improvements that would have to come about as the result of that study at final plat approval. From our standpoint, most of the comments have been addressed. I know Mike has a few things that he wants to discuss. Something that we are making developers and applicants aware of now are the new U.S. Postal Service requirements as far as centralized mail delivery in new subdivisions or even possibly new sections of existing subdivisions. They are showing an area for a mail kiosk for this development. That is something we're going to have to have a little more work on and they're aware of that. But we're in the process of developing some regulations, hopefully to have something to you on that here in the next month or so. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Mike and let him discuss some of the issues with this.
Okay. Well, thank you and good morning. We, like Doug said, we did receive an updated traffic study and what we have found out from their conclusion is that it, this development along with many others that on Walnut Grove Road will impact Walnut Grove Road and the turning movements and traffic patterns of this area. And they've come up with a couple scenarios. One was, you know, if we do add a traffic signal at the intersection of 231 and Walnut Grove Road, how will it impact the traffic flow of 231? And that's, we've reached out to the state and we've yet to have a meeting with them. They've initially responded back, but we have not had a chance to touch, touch base with the state and follow up with them, but we'd like to get the state's involvement with that. Another comment that we had was the hydrology of the, of this proposed subdivision. They have, I have asked for and they have submitted a hydrologic study, but it essentially looked at the streams and the ponds on the property. It did not address the soils and this, this property has, and I'll turn on the layer. This is, this is 230, excuse me, 269 Walnut Grove Road. This is 231 running north and south. The property is, this property and then the adjacent one as well. For some reason, I'm getting an extra box in here, but it's this yellow property where most of the roads and the subdivision lots will be. This adjacent property will be used for common area. And when I, when I mentioned the soil, if you look at the soil types, it's mostly Ruelin, Tupelo, some Dalton down here. These are what's known as hydroic soils and those make me lose sleep at night because of building roads on those. Those stay wet, they're hard to drain. When I first started here, we were working on a subdivision that had roads built in hydroic soils and had several failures. So I'm kind of cautious about this one. This is going to be a challenge. I'm not going to pull any punches on that. This, once it comes, if it does go beyond this and goes to construction plans, I'm probably going to need a geotech engineer out here all the time from the developer to make sure that the roads and the lots and everything are suitable, suitable to build on. The hydrologic study, like I said, came back that they don't have jurisdictional waters or, or wetlands on here, but, but the, like I said, the hydroic soils give me pause that, and I need, I think we need to ask for, from recent training that we've had, I think we need to ask for a soil and a wetlands evaluation on this. If you look at the, the proposed development, and I'll zoom in. This, to the east here is Walnut Grove Farms and they've identified wetlands up here in the back that they're going to save. And this property is adjacent property that's part of this Walnut Chase and they've identified this as wetlands as well. But you can see on either side of the property line, you know, I mean, it's kind of a straight line based on the, on the, on the property lines where they delineate those and it's, it's, you know, common sense will tell me, is there anything in between?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that's, that's kind of what I'm, I'm looking at. Zooming in here. It's, it's been farmed over the years. Looks like they tried to establish a nursery of some type. You could see the, the trees planted and rows, but it's, you know, it's been worked over the years and cut for hay. But it's got some area that's, that's not been cut and that's, that's given me, you know, cause for concern too. What's going on back here while it wasn't disfarmed and cleared?
What's the detention pond?
Mike, when you, when you go into these type soils and you take down the top soil, black dirt as we call it in ag community, pardon me, how far down do you have to go before you get a suitable subsoil?
Well?
Or how far down to bedrock are you?
What, what we were talking with, with our training this morning, it could be several feet. I mean, it could be, you know, there's several issues. The land is extremely flat. There's sufficient flow through here, so the soil stays wet all the time. It doesn't drain out. So, you know, it's been classified by the U.S. Department of Agriculture as a hydroic soil. And so, I mean, you can farm it, you have to be able to drain it, you work it in the summer months, but you know, in the spring and the fall, you probably couldn't get in there and farm. So I, I'd like some more information on the soil type of, I would like to have a environmental engineer look at this, have the consultant, have an environmental engineer look at this and, and tell me, you know, are we going to have problems with these roads? Are we going to have problems with these lots? Because I lost a lot of sleep on these road failures in this other subdivision, so I don't, I don't want to, you know, lose my beauty sleep anymore than I have to. But like I said, it, it's going to be a challenge, but I...
My neighbors make fun of me because I always ask about the drainage, but I know drainage will be a problem here.
Right, right.
If, if you can get the roads suitable, are you comfortable with the drainage?
Well, we have to look at the lots as well, where, where we're going to be building houses on here, so.
At what point do you, that wetland evaluations? At what point?
Well, I mean, like I said, we, we could, I mean, you could approve this just based on the layout and whatnot, but if, if they come back with construction plans and a, and a soil, you know, wetland determination that might impact this, they might have to come back through and, you know, with, with lot changes, road configurations.
So this is a better time to do it later?
I, I don't lose a lot of sleep, but this one's made me lose some sleep, you know, based on the soil types. Like I said, they did do a hydrologic determination for the streams and the ponds, which came back as non-jurisdictional, but with, with these soil types, you know, and it's, you know, the Ruelin, Tupelo and Dalton, they're, these are classified as hydroic soils, so like I said, we, we can hold up development. If the construction plans don't come back and we're satisfied that, that the roads won't fail and the lots won't fail, we could let it move ahead. But I mean, I just, I'm just being cautious, I guess I should say. I'm looking out for the residents, I'm looking out for the highway department, you know, for their, you know, one of these days, these roads are going to be turned over to the highway department and we don't want to, you know, have to go in there and spend a lot of money trying to repair the roads and...
The word failure always makes me pump the brakes pretty hard. So when you say possible road failure?
Right.
Talk to me a little, I know we have some really talented engineers that come in front of us and with enough time and money?
Yes, yes.
Anything can easily be engineered around. So what kind of engineering would need to happen to guarantee we don't have?
Right. We have to be able to dry the soil out. So that might, that might entail underdrains and might entail excavating out this hydroic soil, bringing shot rock fill back in. But then, I mean, that protects the roads, but we have to look at the lots too.
Right, right.
You know, what, we don't want residents calling us back and saying, hey, my, my foundation's cracking, my, you know, because the hydroic soil dries out, gets wet, you know, it's...
Right.
It's like a big...
In a small area, they've got three, three detention ponds.
Mm-hmm.
Which kind of leads me to believe that that's how they're trying to capture that drainage.
Well, and that's, that's part of their design too. I mean, they're trying to, there's a, a stream or intermittent, I should say, wet weather conveyance that flows through here and they're trying to drain everything to this lower area and that's why they put these, these detention ponds on either side of it. So that's, I think, part of the reason, you know, they're draining everything to the low areas for these, these ponds. Is that what your question was?
Well, I, I guess I'm just thinking, you know, like you had said earlier, common sense tells you if there's a wetland to the right and the left, there's probably some in the middle.
Might be some in the middle, that's what I'm...
So when I see those three ponds, they're that close together, that leads me to believe there's something in the middle. So that's just the reason that I bring those up.
Well, like I said, you know, I might be stealing Doug's thunder, but I mean, we're looking at the lot layout and the road layout, but me, you know, being an old design engineer, looking at the soil, I'm thinking, you know, when, I'm thinking we might need a little more investigation on this one.
So, so let's say we ask for the additional report and it comes back and your suspicions are confirmed that it's a wetland. That doesn't mean the project's dead.
No.
It just means they have to do a lot more.
They have to do some more work. They might have to do some mitigation. I mean, they might, you know, have to do some repair of those wetlands.
Well, because again, based on the training that we received about wetlands, even mitigation concerns me because if you can buy off-site mitigation, that doesn't fix a road or a lot failure.
No, no. So I'm, that's what I'm saying. These construction plans will need, you know, a lot of detailed investigation on how are we going to drain these roads? How are we going to drain these lots?
Well, and is that...
To prevent failures.
Is that why there's a, there's a note on every page that says, "All lots are critical lots"? Does that have anything to do with this?
That might have to do with the size of the lots.
Well, it references a CUD approval.
Yeah, yeah. Any, any lot narrower than 80 feet wide, CUD wants a plot plan essentially showing the lot, the step tank and driveway and everything, so make sure everything fits on these narrow lots.
Right.
So we got stub streets going out here where possibly someday go through Mr. Lyles property all the way to Stone River Line, right?
So if, if a phase one or a geotechnical study had been done already, Mike, is that part of the submittal package that's sent to you for review? Or do you not necessarily see those packages?
It's not necessary unless we ask for it.
Okay.
So I mean, the...
It could have been done for all we know.
Right. They might have that. But I, like I said, I asked for a hydrologic determination and I assumed that they would look at the soil type, but they did not. They only looked at the surface water and streams and ponds.
What do you need from us?
Well, I mean...
Do we need to table this and pending a, a study or...
We, we could prove it's subject to, you know, the additional studies and the additional discussion with, with T-Dot on the intersection.
Yeah.
Are those all staff comments?
Yes.
They can, they are now.
Yes.
I mean, because we're making it part of the record by just talking about it.
Yeah, but those are some heavy duty issues.
Right. Like I said, I'm, I'm overly cautious because, you know, I'm looking out for the county, the, the roads, the, the future residents. So I mean, I'm, could it work? Yes. It's going to take a lot of, it's going to be challenging, you know.
Really what you're saying is we're going to, the lots are going to be filled probably with shot rock or at least some of those.
Might need some kind of something. Yes, sir. Right.
Which is, I mean, fairly commonplace, but in this county.
Right. I mean, a lot of times developers will, will, you know, utilize an engineered foundation. They, they might use a slab to bridge the, you know, unsuitable soil. So I mean, it's, it's not unheard of, but it's, it's just challenging.
So you're, you're looking for how they would plan to attack these soils?
And that, that will be the construction plans. So we do have a, you know, copy of the construction plans, but it's, it doesn't address the hydroic soils. It doesn't, doesn't say anything about how, how these roads are going to be drained, how the lots are going to be, you know, protected. So like I said, it doesn't, if it doesn't get past the construction plan, the project doesn't move ahead. Yeah.
So a motion to approve is subject to all staff comments would take care of your concerns at this point?
Yes, sir. Right.
Or a motion to defer?
A motion to defer for an additional investigation on the soils.
I'd like to make that motion.
Oh, please. Mike, where's, where are the CUD, where are the step system soils?
They are a little bit farther to the south. They're going to be combined.
I remember that.
Down here, this area.
Right. That's what I figured it had to be.
And, and if you look at the soils map on our GIS, it, it kind of shows up.
Article.
The better soils are down here in this area. Brightable and Capshaw and...
Yeah, it's pretty marginal.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to defer item 18-1008 for Walnut Chase.
Yes, for further study on soils.
Okay.
And any other staff comments?
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to defer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion to defer carries. Thank you. Item 6B submitted for final plat approval. 6B1, item number 17-2068 for Kerry Wilson, three lots on 3.4 acres, zone RM located off Old Lebanon Pike. Kerry Wilson, ETL is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This plat probably looks familiar. This was originally approved by the commission back in September of last year. Of course, final plat approvals are only valid for 180 days. If they're not recorded by then, then their approval lapses. Really, this is just a reapproval. Nothing on this plat has changed. The comments have been addressed and the plat's in good order. It's just a matter of getting a reapproval.
Now, the motion approved?
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve final plat for Kerry Wilson. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B2, 18-2086, Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 1, 68 lots on 14.71 acres, zone RM/PRD located off Shelbyville Pike, BMCH Tennessee is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This preliminary plan was approved by the planning commission back in August of last year. This final plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary plan approval. There were a few housekeeping items that needed to be addressed after our initial review. Those have been taken care of. One item that's outstanding, but will be taken care of prior to recording, just deals with the mail delivery for this particular subdivision. We discussed that briefly when we were talking about the last subdivision. How we're going to handle this moving forward is, they just need to have documentation to us and how this is going to be handled prior to us recording the final plat. They're going to be an amenity center with this particular subdivision. It would just make sense if they included that. Mike's showing it right there on lot 124. We've already seen a site plan for that, actually. So it'd be easy to incorporate mail kiosks into that existing site plan. So if that's their plan, great. We don't have a problem with that. We just want to make sure that that's settled before the final plat's recorded.
Are you going to calculate parking based on the number of lots or how are you going to do that?
For the, for the mail kiosks. That was my next question.
What we've, what we're proposing right now, the regulations that we're looking at, and we've downloaded several examples. We've seen kind of different ways to handle it. Some just require just a certain number of spots. We are actually looking at a number of, basically like you said, number of lots. We haven't quite nailed that down yet. I've got a, some preliminary numbers out there based on some of the other ones I've looked at, but this is a little bit different because it's going to be kind of a come and go, kind of a situation where someone's just pulling up long enough to grab their mail and then they're gone.
Right.
So I don't think you're going to need like 10, 15, 20 spaces even on a larger subdivision if you've got enough for, say, three to five spots for someone to pull off, do what they need to do and then leave. That's probably going to be sufficient.
And that's why I asked, because it may just be, we don't want to set a firm policy. We may want to do it, you know, subdivision by subdivision because if this is at an amenity center where people are already going to be there?
Right.
Then maybe you do need more parking.
Well, for, yeah, for an amenity center, what we're proposing right now is not to require any additional parking beyond what would be in the amenity center anyway. What we're thinking about for the required parking spaces when there's not an amenity center is something like, like maybe like a bulb out or there's enough area for people there to kind of pull off the road, kind of almost like a parallel parking area, but have like three or four spaces in there where enough people could pull off the road so they're not backing up traffic or anything like that. That's kind of what we're looking at for those situations outside of a amenity center.
I guess I was just thinking about the difference between a passive area and active area. An active is going to have more people there depending on what, whatever the amenities are.
Right.
So that's the only reason I was thinking you would need more of it. I trust your judgment.
Doug, have other jurisdictions been dealing with this earlier than we are?
Well...
And do we need to look at researching their criteria?
Well, that's, that's what we've been doing. Interestingly, now this, as far as Tennessee is concerned, I think this is really, at least for our area, like I said, we just found out about this about a month or so ago, if even that long. So we're all kind of playing catch-up for this.
So this would be the bedroom counties surrounding Nashville.
Right.
This is all of them.
Right. Now, yeah, exactly. Now, the, most of the regulations that I've reviewed have been in Georgia or North Carolina. I know there's other areas of the country that have been dealing with this a lot longer than, than we have, but the closest ones I can find and have found more readily have been in those two states. Interestingly enough, at the upcoming fall conference for the state planning associations being Kingsport this year, there's actually going to be a session on this very topic about centralized mail delivery and subdivisions, how we're going to handle that, because I've been getting emails, as chapter president, I've been getting emails from other, you know, from East Tennessee even about, hey, we just found out about this, how are we going to deal with this and...
They want your regulations.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I've called a couple places as well in Tennessee, some of the other folks that I know. And I mean, we're all in the same boat right now. We're all trying to get our, you know, try to get a grasp of this, so...
You know, a development this size, you need more than one, I would think.
Well, and that's, you're right, and that's a possibility. That's something that the developers are going to have to work out with the postal service as they're planning their subdivisions, especially when we're looking at brand new subdivision, like the last plat we looked at, Walnut Chase. We've encouraged them and told them, you need to talk with the U.S. Postal Service folks. That way you can figure out exactly where you're going to put your kiosks and do they want one central area? Do they, like you said, do they want multiple? When you've got a, well, something like South Haven as an example, that one's probably going to still remain curbside delivery, at least right now, just because we've already seen several sections of that. But if that were just getting off the ground today, you're talking 500 plus lots. I mean, are you going to be able to have an amenity area that's going to be able to have that many boxes? Probably not. You know, it makes more sense at that point if you have smaller amenity areas around the subdivision to break it out so one person who lives on one side of the subdivision doesn't have to, you know, drive basically all the way to the other side to get their mail and then back. So, I mean, your point's well taken.
And you could possibly phase the kiosks with the phases of the development maybe?
Yes, absolutely.
Does the postal service have a contact person or do they have criteria, Doug?
As far as, we do have a contact person, yes, that we can refer people to.
Do they, do they have to approve it much like CUD or Middleton's Electric would?
They sign off on it. It's not like the same as they sign off on a plat or anything like that. As far as the, you know, how they're structured in subdivisions, if they're part of amenity areas, if they're standalone kiosks, if they have parking, if they don't, if they're sightlighting, if there's not, they leave all that to the localities. They don't get involved in that so much.
Package delivery, will it go straight to the house?
They actually have, most of these kiosks will have areas, larger box areas where they can securely put the packages in as part of that. Now, I would imagine there may be situations where they have to still, you know, drop it off at your house. Of course, that's, I don't think that's going to count for UPS, FedEx or anything like that. They're still going to come to your door because this is the U.S. Postal Service. So, you know, of course, you know, a lot of that, I don't know about you all, but some of the packages we receive from what I think is being shipped FedEx or UPS is actually being shipped to the post office who takes it and then does the last leg of it. So, I mean, so it's...
And another component of this will be the address labeling for 911 services.
Yes, and that is something that we've been talking about as staff as well because, of course, I think the fire code and COA, and correct me, and Tanya and Larry are both here, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are codes that do say you have to have the numbers where they're visible, you know, certain size letter numbering rather, that are visible from the street. But you're absolutely right. You know, typically, the mailboxes at the curb have all the mail, the addresses on them. So somebody driving, be it fire emergency, be it the pizza delivery guy, be it the mailman, can see where the address is. Now you have to look at further off the road at the house. And even at night, if you're 40, 50 feet away, you know, that can cause some issues. So that is something that, yes, that we are concerned with as well. Beyond that, the plat in itself is in good order. Just, just wanted to make you aware of that issue with the mail delivery.
Make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 1. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B3, 18-2087, Kane Lee Adams subdivision, one lot on 4.03 acres zone RM located off Rockford Road. Kane Lee Adams and William Lee are the applicants. This includes a dedication of right-of-way, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. What you're seeing here is a property line shift. You can kind of see on the plats, the former property line and the new property line. If my memory serves me right, this is actually to correct an older plat that was done on this property to show the property line correctly, just a slight shift to the north. As far as the plat is concerned, this plat is in good order. The only reason it's coming before you is due to the right-of-way dedication. That is something we're working on. So in the future, you won't have to see these quite as often. This is something that we should be able to handle administratively without a problem. But our comments have been addressed and this plat's in good order.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Kane Lee Adams subdivision. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B4, 18-2088, Lee Property, three lots on 9.4 acres, zone RM located off John Puckett Road. Anna Hoy Lee is the applicant. This includes a dedication of right-of-way.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I appreciate it. This does include right-of-way, but it's also coming before you because it's three lots. Even if there were no right-of-way dedication, this one would still have to come before you because we're only allowed to do plat approvals of one or two lots administratively. So once that third lot gets in there, this automatically has to come before you and that's a matter of state law, not just our local regulations. As you can see, they're looking to divide this into three tracks. I'll get to the fire hydrant issue here in just a moment. We did receive a phone call from one of the neighbors in the area that had some concerns about the drainage of the property, also the possibility that maybe there's some sort of a sinkhole on the property. The surveyor has provided us some additional documentation from the topography of this site and we've shared that with our engineering staff. I know Mike's looked at this along with the information that we have as well. There's no evidence that we can see on this property that there's any kind of a sinkhole or anything. Actually, and Mike will correct me if I'm wrong, but the drainage of this looks pretty straightforward as far as that goes. It doesn't appear to be anything that really would jump out at us as being problematic with the drainage, but I did want to make you aware of that discussion that we did have. As far as the fire hydrant determination is concerned, that's still, the jury's kind of still out on that one. The flow tests and the, just the testing that they've done kind of would indicate that a little more work needs to be done with that as far as a hydrant waiver is required. If you all are comfortable, we could approve this subject to that determination being made. If that determination is made that a fire hydrant waiver is warranted because the hydrants can't be supported on that water line, they would have to sprinkle the lots because this is a three-lot subdivision. So it would just be a matter of adding that certification to the plat in which case, when building permits were issued, we would make sure the plat got a big red stamp on it saying that, yes, sprinkler systems are required for this so the building inspectors would know to look for that. So with that, Mr. Alan Stemke from CUD is here if he wants to provide any more information about the fire hydrant analysis that's being performed on that. But with that, beyond that issue, the plat in and of itself is in good order. The, our comments have been addressed.
And I would assume the applicant is aware that they might have to sprinkle these.
That was part of our comments, yes, sir.
To sprinkle or add the fire.
Well, if the fire hydrant can be supported, then they just have to add it. It's not an either or. So, right, yeah, we've had that come up before where some developers, applicants will say, well, I'd rather just sprinkle the homes, not put a hydrant in. Well, that's not an option. If the hydrant can be supported, it has to be placed.
Do you do have anything to add at this point?
I think it's covered it well. We're just, we don't have a final determination.
May I ask, what's the approximate cost of a hydrant install these days?
I think, and Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, I know a lot of it depends on the size of the line, but generally you're looking at a minimum of $4,000.
Captain Slaver Val, hydrant assembly.
I would make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Lee Property. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B5, 18-2089, resub of plats of record, Dean Johnson and Dot Black, two lots on eight acres, zone CS, located on Flat Rock Road. Matthew Bratton is the applicant. This includes dedication of right-of-way.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yes, these properties were rezoned to commercial services, well, actually both in 2017 and then also a portion in 2018 and remaining the larger tract in 2018. A site plan was approved for parcel 6.01 with the understanding that a re-subdivision plat would be recorded showing that original prop, or the additional property being added to it. That's what you're seeing down in here is the addition of that to make this property larger, to accommodate that building should it be constructed. At this point, I'm not sure what the applicant's plans are, if they want to move forward with it or not, but in the event that they decide to do that, this would be taken care of. Besides some housekeeping issues, this plat was in good order after our first review. When they did the second review, they had addressed the additional comments. Again, there were just minor comments that we had. This was pretty straightforward. So with that, we'd recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the re-subdivision of plats of record to Dean Johnson and Dot Black. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B6, 18-2090, Richmond's Retreat, Section 4, 19 lots on 6.06 acres, zone RM/PRD located off Richmond's Retreat Boulevard. KW Group is the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The preliminary plan for this section was approved by the planning commission back in February of 2017. This final plat is consistent with that preliminary plan approval. We did have several comments on this. Those comments have been addressed. I go back to the same discussion about the U.S. Postal Service discussion we had. They will provide documentation to us prior to the recording of the plat about how mail delivery will be handled. Again, this is, this subdivision's been in existence for several years and it's just a continuation of that. What we've seen so far with a couple of other developments is that they continue with the same type of mail delivery that they've already have, but that'll need to be confirmed prior to us recording the plat. Besides that issue, everything else is in order with this and we'd recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Richmond's Retreat, Section 4. Any other comments?
The double asterisk at the bottom, this is lot 74 through 79, and there's acronyms there, or this is due to local drainage. What does that mean?
It backs up to our stream buffer. We're going to require a critical lot grading plans on each one of these because of the water quality buffer on all these lots. Is that what you meant?
Yeah, the note at the bottom says 74 through 79.
Oh, okay, okay. We established, or the design engineer established minimum pad, minimum floor to protect the houses for, not due to FEMA requirements, but just the local drainage requirements.
And will that apply to those lots that back up to the?
These, I believe, based on the existing topography, were high enough it wasn't an issue, but we'll look at that with each grading plan, each lot. With the single asterisk, we'll require individual lot grading plan.
Okay, I didn't see the asterisk.
Grading plan.
Mike, you're in the general vicinity of what we discussed earlier on Walnut Grove. These better soils overall?
Quality of water protection.
They are, yeah. Brightable. It does have some lemon and harp, but there's some egen down here, but that's in this stream area. Better soil.
Any questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B7, 18-2091, Magnolia Valley Estates, Section 2, five lots on 52.27 acres, zone RL, located off Alisona Road. Mary Toon is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The first thing you're going to notice on this plat after Mike zooms into the area here, the description was for five lots. What you're seeing now is just three. What they have done for the remaining area, since they're all going to be over five acres and pretty much they have road frontage or will just be one tract accessing, excuse me, a 50-foot easement, they've left those off the plat because they technically wouldn't be subdivision lots, so they really didn't need to be shown on the plat. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of why that, why that changed the way that it did. They are proposing to divide this, as you see, into three different tracks. They're all over five acres in size and will be accessed off of Alisona Road with a private access easement. You'll see one of them is a flag lot, Lot 5, and the other two will just have access to that flag is what you're seeing there. We did have a number of concerns on that particular plat. Those concerns have been addressed, especially in light of the fact that they took those other lots off of there. There were some concerns that we had about that, but again, since they're all five acres and they need to be on the plat, as far as those concerns went, they were able to remove those concerns that we had. So with that, the plat in and of itself is in good order. Most of the lots that we've seen on Alisona Road, they will have to have fire sprinklers in these lots as well because the, most of the subdivisions that we've looked at in this area cannot support a hydrant, you know, as far as I'm aware that that is the case here as well. So with that, the plat's in good order and we would recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
On the plat note 11, it says that there's a T.D. driveway entrance permit required for Lot 7.
Yes, yeah, Alisona Road is a state road, so that's fine. I mean, it's really for all of them, but the lot itself is Lot 7, which is why it's just for that lot specifically.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve with staff comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Magnolia Valley Estates, Section 2. Any other questions or comments?
Gail, make a note, I'm not going to vote.
All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B8, 18-2092, South Haven, Section 5, 32 lots on 7.82 acres, zone PUD, located off Ocala Road. South Haven Development Group is the applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. This preliminary plan was approved by the planning commission back in September of 2015. This is consistent with that overall master plan. Our comments have been addressed. This is one of the subdivisions where we actually already do have confirmation from the U.S. Postal Service that this will remain curbside delivery. We've already printed that out and put it in the file. So with that, again, this plat's in good order and we'd recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve South Haven, Section 5. Questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B9, 18-2093, Estates of Harvest Woods, 35 lots on 33.11 acres, zone RM, located off Blue Ridge Drive. Harvest Grove is the applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this subdivision was approved by the planning commission back in September, in September of last year. This plat is consistent with that approved plan. Again, really just more housekeeping items that we were looking at on this. Of course, the mail delivery will need to be determined prior to recording. And Mike, looks like you had something here about the drainage easement, tying that down a little bit.
They have a drainage easement. These lots are extremely long and they have a drainage easement on the mid-part of these lots. I just need them to tie that down with some dimensions on the plat. So it'll be easier to replicate that in the field if we need to. Just some housekeeping stuff, nothing.
Right. They will need to show the fire hydrant locations prior to recording as well, which, which is fine. They're just not shown yet on here, but they can be.
On plat note 19, it says the conservation easement is shown here for sinkhole protection. Where's the sinkhole?
There is a, an area up here at the north of these lots and then also in the southwest corner. But these lots are so large it shouldn't impact the building.
I just couldn't find it on there.
Easement.
Who maintains that?
It will be the homeowner that they're not allowed to build in that area and it's so it's just part of their lot. Essentially, it's just protecting that area.
For instance, in the easement, do you know, excuse me, do you know, will that be piped? Is that just a, is that a channel?
This is an open ditch to a point and then I think it's piped into the right-of-way. And this as well is an open ditch until it's piped, a proportion of it, so.
An owner would clearly know where his limitations are if he wanted to build a fence. He knows not.
Yes, yes. So that, giving us a little dimension from a property corner in each side would help tie that down and a bearing or something along the line, kind of like what they did for the conservation easement. They've got bearings and distances to kind of tie it down.
Now, will they be able to put anything back there, you know, if they like to fence it in, is it a cow or a horse or?
Yeah, well, I mean, in the drainage area, we wouldn't want a fence across there to, you know, which would block the drainage. But I mean, they could use this area, they, you know, could, you know, put a pipe across here and, and build back here, you know, accessory structure or, you know, fence in this area.
Mike, how deep will that ditch be then, behind those houses?
Our minimum ditches are 18 inches deep, but I think these might be a little bit deeper. And this is, and I'll show you on the, our GIS map. This is near the top of the hill and we are in the construction plans there essentially catching the flow coming down this hill and taking it to the stormwater network.
And we're not using these sinkholes that were previously.
This is up here at the top here.
Only what's natural going into.
Yes, sir. We're, you know, capturing the runoff from this hill and then getting it into our storm drainage network.
Instead of that drainage easement being an open ditch, wouldn't it make more sense to go ahead and pipe it or no?
Well, we've got to catch the surface drainage and that's, the open ditch will do that.
I'm thinking about like homeowner number two, the one that buys it after this guy.
Right.
He's going to think, why is there a dip in my backyard? You know? Is he going to realize it's a drainage easement that serves a purpose?
Yes, well, and if he were to come in and get an affidavit to build a fence.
Oh, he's not coming in.
Well.
Well, number one may not come in either.
Then I'm going to have to send my public works engineer out there and tell him that, hey, your fence is in the wrong location and you need to take it out.
Is there any routine inspection of those type things?
I wish I had more people to do that, but no, it's typically.
After someone calls?
Right, when we get an issue of drainage.
Water's backing up in my yard and.
My neighbor built something over here and now I'm getting extra water or, you know. Yeah.
So there's no, there's nothing you'd recommend besides the open ditch that would capture the surface water and just let, you know, folks know this is a drainage easement?
Right, yes, ma'am. Now, it's, like I said, it's sheeting off this hill, and that open ditch allows us to capture that before it goes towards the houses.
Don't know it.
What's?
When it rains, don't.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
My wife's there.
I mean, you could, you could do it. We have had, you know, property owners come back in and say, hey, can we pipe this section of the ditch? And that would be up to that individual homeowner to pay for a contractor, and we would be involved in the review process of that as well. So I mean, in some instances, we can allow them to pipe a section of the drainage network, but we've got to, this, for instance, we've got to capture the sheet flow coming off that hill.
I think we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with our staff comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Estates of Harvest Woods. Other comments or questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
There any opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. Item 6C submitted for site plan approval, 6C118-3014, Exit 89 Self-Storage, new construction of an 81,050 square foot mini storage facility on 7.65 acres, Zoned EAC, located off Miller Road. Joshua Welkum is the applicant, Doug.
Yes, sir, thank you. This particular site probably looks familiar to the planning commissioners. Site plans for both of these properties, this is two properties, right now we have seen a plat to combine them, but these were both approved by the Planning Commission back in 2017. One was called the James Davis Site Plan, and the other one was called the Joshua Welkum Site Plan. The applicant, again, has submitted a plat combining these, and they've resubmitted this plat, I'm sorry, the site plans you have before you for the overall property, not just one of the properties. You'll recall that Joshua Welkum was actually going to be mini storage, whereas the James Davis was for a different type of development, but what you're seeing now is the entire property going to be used for mini storage. This has gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception for the mini storage use, so as far as that's concerned, it is taken care of. This was actually going to be on last month's Planning Commission agenda, but there were some issues with the drainage that needed to be worked out, pretty significant issues, and we felt that this really just wasn't ready yet, needed a little more time for review and to determine how the drainage was going to work. Most of the comments that we have as staff have been addressed. I know Mike and myself have been working with Bill Huddleston, who's the design engineer for this project. Bill is present, but I'm going to turn it over to Mike to discuss the drainage issue, which is still, I know, kind of being addressed, but I know Mike's got some comments on it.
One of the issues I had was draining to the south. There's a pocket just to the adjacent property to the south that essentially didn't have anywhere to go. It would have to build up and either spill over the road or need some improvements. And we've asked the design team, and they have approached the roads development across the street, and they've got a consent to drain. So what they're going to do is install a cross drain in this area to help with the drainage. So one of the things we'll need them to correct is that it's not, the cross drain's not going to be installed by the Rutherford County Highway Department. It will be under the supervision of the highway department, but the contractor will need to install that and repair the road to county standards. But all in all, it's, with the cross drain in place and the work that they've done, the plans are in fairly good order. We've got a few housekeeping issues to address, some grading around the driveway culvert and some work on the pond, but all in all, it's in good shape. There's a proposed water line that's going to be installed through the middle of the property that CUD's got an easement, water line easement and a construction easement, and that's part of the reason it's been phased. You can see the heavy phase line here. They're going to stay out of that, that area until CUD installs that water line. But all in all, the site plan for Phase 1 is in fairly good order. Like I said, just a few housekeeping issues.
Mike, can they build over that or pave over that easement?
Once it's installed.
Once it's installed.
Once it's installed, they'll have to work with CUD on that. There's no plans for any buildings over the top of that, just parking and drive access aisles and whatnot, but we've asked them to even stay out of their construction easement so CUD can come in here and install the water line as required and not have to worry about hitting a building or whatnot.
Do you have a timeframe?
That would be.
How close is CUD to?
Is it under contract? I think it's next summer.
It's near then.
Like I said, just a few housekeeping issues, and we will have a, once all these issues are hammered out, we'll have a pre-construction meeting before they start moving dirt, and they'll, you know, we'll contact the highway department and make sure they're on site and get the proper permits to cross the road with this new culvert.
Look, new culvert is correct in something that should have been corrected years ago, essentially.
Right.
Had no adverse effect on the property owner that it's draining to.
No, sir. It's essentially, it's an undeveloped piece of property, but there's a stream that flows on the roads development side, and essentially this is allowing the water to go where it wants to go. I'll kind of zoom in if I can get my computer to work. I think I went to super close end. But like I said, it's correcting a problem that, let me just go back to the bookmark. All right, essentially, it's these two parcels right here, and the pocket, the low area, was kind of right in this area. You can see this enclosed contour. It would have to either build up, spill over the road, or build up, spill over, go down the ditch, but I think it would try to go over the road. So with all this new impervious area, the pond would help, but this would allow it a safe path to go and not impact the road.
Motion approved, subject to your comments.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve site plan for Exit 89 Self-Storage.
Landscaping, good.
Yeah, landscaping is really going to be more just for the parking areas. The whole site around it's zoned the same, EAC, so there are no buffering required.
Not all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
There any opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. Item 6C218-3018, Premier Portable Buildings, new construction of 240 square foot office, gravel display area and related parking area for portable building sales on 2.20 acres, Zoned CG, located off John Bragg Highway. Sims Commercial Realtors are the applicants, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property was on Commercial General in November of 2017. As you stated, they're proposing to construct a small office for portable building sales, and you can see kind of where they're proposing to have their inventory stored on site. There were several comments. A number of those have been addressed. It looks like there's a few on here, and I'm going to let Mike handle those. A lot of them are drainage-related, so I'll turn it over to.
Okay. Let me get to the grading sheet. They're proposing, there's an, right now, there's an 18-inch culvert, an existing culvert. There's kind of a driveway here, gravel drive. It drains to a double 48-inch culvert. I'm going to need the design engineer to kind of look at that again. Let me get to that area. I think there's a little bit more drainage going to those culverts than that 18-inch could handle. I've calculated about 70 acres draining to that new driveway. Said it, I think the driveway's right here, and there's, there's an 18-inch culvert there, but, no, here's the driveway. Here's the driveway. There's the twin 48s right here, but if you look at the, I'll go to the USGS, kind of shows it a little bit easier. You've got this, all this area right in here, and I calculated about 70 acres going to this driveway culvert. So we're going to need them to reevaluate that and make sure that driveway is sized accordingly. Let's see. Which is, I mean, just something they can change. I don't have a lot of heartburn about that. There was an issue with the fire truck. They have updated the fire truck, truck turning template to a larger truck. Let's see. Oh, on the grading sheet, I asked them to increase the size of the grading plan. It's kind of difficult to read. Even zooming in, it's, some of the stuff's hard to read, so I'm just asking them to blow that up for me and give me a little more so I can read. My old eyes are having a hard time reading some of these plans. But other than that, the plans are in fairly good order.
Staff's recommending approval with.
Subject to staff comments, yes, sir.
Now, when we approved this, they said they were going to put a gathering spot there.
Well, they were talking, there was property to the, I mean, they had actually talked about doing some sort of a, if I remember right, some, like, the possibility of a club or something like that. Now, the property on the other side, right next to it, the Kenneth Harris, that was just rezoned within the last couple of months. That actually just went to the Board of Commissioners this month, if I remember right. And they did talk about a gathering on that one, like a large event venue kind of a thing. But unfortunately, with our, with the zoning we have, of course, they may have ideas, but they may not pan out. We're allowed to do what's allowed by the zoning.
That gravel drive there, will they, and a turnoff, will that be required? I mean, that's a heavy traffic right there.
Well, the gravel drive, I mean, that'll have to be upgraded to paving. That's just existing, yeah.
They're posing a paved drive up to a point, and the parking will be paved as well.
Right.
So the gravel lot is just for?
For the storage of.
For the storage of the buildings.
The units themselves, right.
But the driveway will have to meet TDOT standards. They'll have to get an entrance permit through TDOT, and this will be all paved through here, and the parking area will be paved. The office will have a concrete sidewalk around it, but this, the area where the storage of the, storage buildings will be gravel.
And, and Mike, those twin 48s go across the.
Go to the north, I believe, yes, sir.
North. We're not seeing the entire parcel under this site plan, correct?
No, sir. They're going to maintain this existing house and barn. I think it's going to stay a rental property, but it's, it's essentially just the eastern half of this, this property will be the premier.
So if they decide that they want to do something different with that portion of the property, we'll have to come back with another site plan.
Correct, right, or if they wanted to redevelop the whole thing, then they have to come back with another site plan, that's correct.
So with the property having two different uses like that, is there any need for any kind of a buffer between the two?
No, it's all zoned the same, and, I mean.
The house is grandfathered in.
But yeah, there's not a property line to buffer between them or anything like that.
Are there no more questions on that motion to approve, subject to staff comments?
Second. A motion and a second to approve Premier Portable Buildings. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone who wishes to object to that? Motion to approve carries, thank you. Under Old Business, staff reports, staff, okay?
Just, yeah, I think we're fine. Yep. Thanks, thanks for asking. No, I just had one quick announcement. I know I've sent some emails out, and I have heard from several of you about the Cumberland Region tomorrow Power of 10 Summit on the 13th. I've got to hear from four, so if anybody else wants to go, let me know today, because I'm going to go ahead and hand in the names and everything. So just, if there's anybody who hasn't already told me they want to go, that wants to go, just let me know and we'll take care of it, so.
What is it, September 13th?
The 13th, yes, from a little, which is County Commission Day, but at the same time, it's supposed to be done by 2, 3 o'clock, if I remember right.
Did you want to give any kind of update on your software?
Right now, we've had our initial kickoff meeting. They're in the process right now. Actually, we just, they sent us an email about a week or so ago that they've been working with our OIT folks. They're making sure that the server, everything is the way it needs to be with that. A lot of that's above my pay grade, so I'd be, might as well try talking another language. But they're hopeful to have that first workflow ready for us, which is inquiries, which we'll be able to share amongst planning codes, engineering. That'll be the first, then they recommended that as a first step because it's a pretty easy thing to set up, but we'll be able to, if somebody calls in, and let's say they call in in building codes, they'll be able to jot down some notes, and if they call up the planning, we can just pull up the notes that they've already got. But that should be online here hopefully within the next couple of weeks. And then they'll start getting into a lot of the heavier things after that.
Kind of helped me, Doug, and helped me, Mike, as we go through this, but if you guys will recall, several months ago, we had a discussion on fireworks, and we referred back to a discussion years earlier about fireworks that this commission spent hours discussing, forwarded a recommendation onto the county commission, and the county commission rejected that. And a couple of months ago, we had some discussion come up against, again, about fireworks, and this commission, at the encouragement of the chairman, asked that we send it to the county commission to get some feedback from them, because we did not want to spend hours and hours developing something that might be rejected again. The county commission has taken that up, I believe, at the last two county commission meetings and decided to forward the whole issue of fireworks to Public Works, and that committee is going to be looking at that and then maybe making some type of a recommendation that would probably come back to this commission for development of that policy and procedure. So the county commission has still looking at that internally to that commission with Public Works. We have at least one commissioner, Mike, is on that Public Works committee, and they'll start addressing that quickly. So our folks that are here that have worked on it need to be aware of that, and I would recommend that they attend those Public Works committee meetings and make sure that all of. of the concerns that we've had up in the past will come forward. The issues that we've had in the past are enforcement issues and those types of things and I think some of those things have been worked out. So it'll be interesting to see what the county commission comes up with and recommends back to us. So we won't be looking at that for a while, but just to bring you guys up to date, it's not a dead issue. It's still an issue that's being looked at and hopefully we'll get some guidance from the county commission somewhere between now and the end of the year, I'd say. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September the 10th and that'll be at 6:00 PM at the courthouse. Once again, Doug, the training session this morning was spot on. All of those training sessions that we've had recently have been extremely beneficial, I think, for us as a planning commission to move forward and we'll encourage those types of trainings to continue in the future. Good job with you and your staff.
Well, thank you.
I noticed from some of the questions, some of the questions came from the staff just in addition to the commission, so that just, to me, speaks volumes that those types of trainings are really just spot on.
I appreciate that. And I want to thank Mike, that was actually his suggestion, so I want to obviously give credit where credit's due. So I thank him because, you know, we both kind of look out for these things, you know, and again, if there's ever a topic that you all want to discuss, it, you know, just let us know and we'll see if we can't find someone to come do that.
Sounds like you're going to be studying Milkyos.
Yes, yeah, I am.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you, we are adjourned.